Okay, awesome. Thank you. I move in reconvene this meeting with the zoning board of Fields. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya.
Yes.
Okay, great. Let's move into calendar numbers two seventeen dash twenty-two dash Z and two eighteen dash twenty-two dash Z. And we'll be with Paul Copac and Colleen Doherty.
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Good afternoon, and I want to note, if anyone is on to object to either of these matters, please raise your hand and we will get you promoted.
My name is Colleen Doherty from Copac Law Group, attorney for the applicant DTLYKVALLC. I am joined by Tatiana Veran, who is a member manager of the applicant LLC, and our architect Alan Leskiv. We are before the board this afternoon requesting several variations. First of all, to reduce the east side setback from the required two feet to zero feet, with the west to be zero feet as well. The combined side yard setback from five feet to zero feet, and to reduce the rear yard open space from the required two hundred fifty-one point three-two square feet to zero. This property is measuring twenty-five feet on the south end that abuts Wrightwood. It is two hundred feet deep and the alley north end is twenty-two point eight-seven-five feet. It was recently rezoned in two thousand twenty-one from an RT four to an RM five in a type one application. Currently, it is improved with a two-story building with a basement containing two dwelling units and an accessory garage structure. It is rated on the Chicago Historical Resource Survey. The applicant owns the property and is currently living there. Proposed variations are to accommodate a conversion of the property from a two-dwelling unit to a three-dwelling unit building by adding a third and fourth floor upper story addition to the existing building, adding a four-story rear addition with a basement, and converting the parking to an unenclosed parking at the rear of the existing building. Regarding hardships here, the subject property, as I've mentioned, is in a regular lot in that it measures twenty-five feet along Wrightwood Avenue but narrows to twenty-two point eight-seven-five feet at its frontage on the alley north of Wrightwood Avenue. So pursuant to the rear open yard space, since the alley side of the lot is irregularly small, the parking spaces could not fit horizontally across the back as might be a traditional conversion. And instead, there is tandem parking on the east side of the lot, which then cuts into the green space. So there is significant green space still in this property. From a square footage perspective only, it actually exceeds the amount. Our issue is that it does not have the ten-foot diameter required because of the width is cut into due to the tandem parking place there. With respect to the side yard, the building has an existing nonconformity as built the sides of the current structure already sits on the east and west property lines in noncompliance with the existing zoning code. As I mentioned, it is rated orange in the Chicago Historical Resource Survey, and the proposal today has been reviewed by the Landmarks Commission. The applicant has worked extensively with the community first during the rezoning process in two thousand twenty-one, and again, by, of course, re-notifying the neighbors and the Park West Neighborhood Association regarding this additional appearance in front of the ZBA. On both occasions, the applicant received written support from both the neighbors and the Park West Association Planning Board. The applicant has also worked closely with Alderman Michelle Smith, who has submitted a letter of support for the board's review. At this time, I would call my first witness, Tatiana Vera, who is the owner of the property. Tatiana, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Tatiana Vera. I live on six fifty west Wrightwood, Chicago, Illinois, six zero six one four.
And you are? Real quick, I'm going to swear wherever. Ms. Vera, will you do you swear or affirm that you'll tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
And you are a member manager of DTLYKVALLC, is that correct?
Correct.
And that entity is the owner of the property, six fifty west Wrightwood Avenue, is that correct?
Correct.
And the property is currently improved with a two-story, two-dwelling unit building and an accessory garage, is that correct?
Correct.
And if granted this variation, your intention is to construct a four-story, three-dwelling unit building with three parking spaces, is that correct?
Correct.
And your intention is to live in the subject property in one of the units and to rent out the remaining two units, is that correct?
Correct.
And you purchased the property as it currently exists, is that right?
Yes.
And prior to applying for these variations, you previously applied and were granted a type-one zoning change from the Committee on Zoning, is that correct?
Correct.
And as part of that application, you had several community meetings, you worked the alderman's office, you had the project reviewed and approved by the Landmarks Commission, and have had no objectors up to this point, to your knowledge, is that correct?
Correct.
And you have previously submitted an affidavit to the board pursuant to this matter, is that correct?
Correct.
And if asked to testify further regarding the contents of that affidavit, your responses would be potentially similar to what were in that affidavit, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I have another further questions for Ms. Vera. I do have the architect. I was going to keep my witnesses at the owner. We have our architect, if there are any questions that he might be able to field from the board.
Great, thank you, counselor. Questions from the board?
Hi.
Sorry, who was that? I don't think that was a board member. I think it's just someone not on mute.
Okay. This is Commissioner Esposito. Could the architect, I'm just looking at the drawing now, can, and it's hard to make out. Can the architect just describe the setback plan? For example, how far back does the first setback recede from the wall plane along the street? Just out of curiosity, I'm trying to make out the drawing on this.
Take a look on the site plan, please. Site plan. Site plan. Here it is. This is existing. And that rear porch at the northwest side was wood frame. We just replaced wood frame structure and extend with the masonry. Existing setbacks, no changes. Even I get in at little like two inches from the east and roughly two inches from the west. Do not restart the property lane. That's all existing, replaced it with new material, match, match, pre-construction.
Okay, I'm sorry, I should have, maybe I should have rephrased my question. On the upper level addition, how far back from the main street facade?
Is it? The number, this is fifteen to the third floor. Last ten something to the fourth floor. It's more than thirty-five, something thirty-seven. I can see it now, but it's far away. It was approved by Landmark.
Oh, yeah, I'm just curious because I wasn't able to read the drawing.
Yeah, yeah, see. That's line.
Okay.
One dimension, this is third floor, and this is fourth floor. This almost half of the building.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Right, counselor, I think we have the information that we need here to make a decision, so we'll take it all under consideration.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, members of the board. Have a great week.
Thanks, you too.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to go now to calendar number forty-five dash twenty-two dash S. As before I read the department's recommendation, I want to note if anyone is here to object to forty-five dash twenty-two dash S, please just raise your hand. I'm promoting people, a few people right now that have forty-five in their names, but most of them look like they're with the applicant, so please just raise your hand if you're here to object. Okay, and therefore the department's recommendation. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish a drive-through facility to serve a proposed Chipotle restaurant, provided that the special use is issued solely to the applicant, Chipotle Mexican Grill, Inc. Number two, the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two, prepared by Design Studio Twenty-four LLC. And number three, the drive-through is limited to a pickup window only for orders placed by customers online in advance and will not feature or utilize an exterior menu, order board, nor speakers. And again, if you're here to object on this matter, raise your hand, but counselor, I think you can go and take it away. There we go. I can hear you now, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, yeah, I was a little far back. I just wanted to take one second just because I know that it can be important for the resolutions that get issued subsequent to the hearing. Going back to my case from earlier today, one ninety-one twenty-two S, I did confirm that there were co-applicants provided throughout on the face of the application and then throughout and the EBS. I just, again, I wanted to clarify it for the record. I sent confirmation to your staff, but I just know that can be important for the resolution.
Okay, it's on the record, and you can talk to staff about it.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that I didn't miss anything for that resolution. With regard to this case, thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Once more, for the record, my name is Sarah Barnes, and I'm an attorney with the law offices of Sam Banks. And I'm very happy to be here this afternoon on behalf of the applicant, Chipotle Mexican Grill Incorporated, and the property owner GW North and Western LLC. Joining us remotely on behalf of the applicant are Cheryl Hidorn, the senior design manager for Chipotle, and Andrea Weisberg, the real estate manager for Chipotle. We also have Mitch Golds with us, who is the managing member of the property owner and development group GW North and Western LLC, along with our MAI certified appraiser, Mr. Terry O'Brien, and a member of our traffic consulting team, excuse me, Javier Milan. Also available to address any design-specific questions is our project architect Gary Eben, as well as another representative from Chipotle, Adam Sessor. And Mr. Chairman, before we swear in my witnesses, were there objectors who signed up? Because I have not received any prior communications from any objectors, so I just want to.
I don't believe there were, and we, I just, I called out for every matter.
Okay, yes, thank you. Okay, I just wanted to make sure we should be preparing. So with that, Mr. Chairman, and if it pleases you, you may swear in the witnesses.
Great, yep, let's go down the list. So I'm going to go down my list that I have. So if Cheryl Hidorn is on, will you please state your name and address?
Yes, my name is Cheryl Hidorn. I'm a senior manager, design manager for Chipotle Mexican Grill. My address is five hundred Neil Avenue, Suite four hundred, Columbus, Ohio, four three two one five.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you very much. Okay, we got Mitch Golds. Mitch, will you state your name and address?
Mitch Golds, Ginnie Properties, twenty-two eleven North Alson Street, four hundred, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six one four.
Great, and do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you very much. Terrence O'Brien is sworn in, and we recognize your expertise.
Thank you.
Yep. Andrea Weisberg, will you state your name and address?
Andrea Weisberg, nine hundred Old Trail Road, Highland Park, Illinois.
Thank you, and do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Adam Sessor, will you state your name and address?
Yes, Adam Sessor, Baum Realty Group, ten thirty West Chicago Avenue.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. Luay Abuna, will you state your name and address?
Javier, it's Javier Milan for Galway on behalf of Luay Abuna. Address is ninety-five seventy-five West Higgins Road in Rosemont.
Great, thank you, Mr. Milan. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
All right, thank you very much, everyone.
Mr. Chairman, yes, Mr. Milan is stepping in for Luay, who is out of town. And thank you for entertaining us here today, Mr. Chairman. I will try, I know we're at the end of the day, everyone's had a long day, so I'll try and keep it short, even for me. However, this is a very unique proposal. In fact, this, it's our understanding based on our engagement for the last year with pretty much every level of administration over at City Hall that this is going to be the first proposal of its kind that you see in front of this board. So I do want to get certain things into the record just because it is a little bit unique and it's going to be the first one, so bear with me and just give me the, if you get really bored. With that, we do come before you here today with, again, kind of a unique request, at least at present time. Though I believe based on kind of our societal changes and behavior as a result of COVID advancements in technology, I have a feeling this is going to become a bit of a tokened societal normal for the city. In that same vein, we come before you today seeking a special use, which if granted, will allow for the applicant Chipotle to operate a single-lane drive-through facility, which will service one of their restaurants, a new restaurant at the subject site. The truly unique part of this proposal is that the termed drive-through will not operate like a standard automated ordering accommodation, but rather the drive-through is only intended to provide vehicular access to a pickup window for customers using Chipotle's digital mobile ordering application, so that the proposed new drive-through component of this proposal will not feature or utilize an exterior menu board or speakers, which such features are generally inherent in a traditional drive-through facility. Accordingly, the applicant will not be accepting onsite orders through the drive-through, but rather the drive-through window is intended to provide vehicular access for the patrons that are picking up completed orders, which such orders, again, were made using that mobile application. It is important to note that the drive-through window is for the first-party customers only, so that third-party delivery drivers will not be permitted to utilize the drive-through window. But instead, they will be directed to park and pick up their items from a designated area within the interior of the restaurant. It is our understanding, again, through many, many months of engagement with the Department of Planning, that this is the first proposal for such a specifically limited form of drive-through operations, at least again within the city of Chicago. If granted, however, this will be the twenty-first Chipotle lane to operate with this type of drive-through pickup window. And I use the term Chipotle lane because that is what Chipotle has creatively coined this concept. It will be the twenty-first one of its kind within the greater Chicagoland area, so the suburbs. And it will be added to the mounting list of over four hundred such Chipotle facilities that are operating throughout the country, including at least twenty, which are located in similar urban neighborhoods. All of these facilities have operated without incident, as has been trapped and memorialized by Chipotle over the last four years. Part of what also makes this request unique is, at least once more in Chicago, is that the zoning ordinance does not yet provide an explicit category for this particular type of operation. As such, and as already indicated, the applicant and their operational team, including myself and the property owner, spent the last thirteen months actively engaging with the Department of Planning, the Department of Transportation, and with Alderman Wagasback and representatives from his community, including the community organizations. Commissioner Toya toured the programming for the proposed new Chipotle lane restaurant, over which time Chipotle has produced over two hundred pages of documentation, statistics, and information specifically related to their Chipotle lane operations, as well as undertaking a professional traffic analysis. These items have been tendered to the board prior to this hearing as applicants supplemental group exhibit D, and they are made a part of the record accordingly. As a result of such ongoing and robust engagement, certain modifications have been made to the architectural and operational plans that are associated with this special use application. Accordingly, a copy of the final plan package dated June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two has been tendered to the board and to DPD prior to this hearing. I would respectfully request that such plan package provide the basis for any determinations made here today and be connected with any resulting resolution. These plans do, I don't know if they're the plans that are actually up there, but the final plans do include an eleventh-hour revision to the overall site plan. That was the result of our ongoing engagement with CDOT directly, which calls for the other retail building at the site, which is intended to be occupied by Circle K Convenience Store, which is not the subject of this special use application, to be pushed back off the property line an additional three feet with a specific intent to widen the pedestrian way, thereby further enhancing public safety and comfort at and around the site. For the record, and just for a bit more information as to the lengthy procedural history of this project, prior to submitting this petition for a special use, the applicant and property owner worked with Alderman Scott Wagasback and his staff toward effectuating a type-one zoning map amendment that would allow for the reactivation of this site. By and through that process, the applicant and its development team engaged with the community to provide details of the proposed new improvements, which were met with general support and excitement. The development team has maintained these communications and engagements throughout the special use process as well. Based on this broader engagement, certain conditions, as you read during the recommendation, have been requested by the alderman with community feedback. Those conditions are to expressly limit the proposed operations to mobile ordering and vehicular pickups only, and to strictly prohibit in-person ordering, i.e. a menu board and speakers, using the drive-through lane. I believe that the alderman did tender a letter to the board, which memorializes such requests prior to the hearing. Chipotle is aware of the alderman's stipulations and agrees to the same as they have represented throughout the process. Through these many months of collaboration and work with the Department of Planning, as well as Chipotle's ongoing efforts to maximize efficiencies and safety at all of over four hundred of their existing operating Chipotle facilities, we are confident that the design and programming for the proposed new operations at this particular site meet all of the standards and requirements for a special use as architified under the current zoning ordinance. In the interest of everyone's time, again, after a long day, I will significantly limit the testimony of our witnesses and rest upon our extensive findings of fact, as well as the supplemental exhibits, as have been corroborated by Mr. O'Brien's expert report and the corresponding traffic study, all of which are a part of your record. And then we can take questions accordingly. So with that, unless there's any initial questions, I can proceed with Ms. Hidorn. Ms. Hidorn, if you can, once more, go back on the record.
Yes.
Oh, hi. Can you just, for clarification, state your name once again for the record?
Oh, sure. Cheryl Hidorn with Chipotle.
And you've been working with Chipotle for about fourteen years, is that correct?
That's correct.
And in the capacity as a store development manager for most of that time, is that right?
Yes, all of that time.
Okay, and so I believe over the last four years, Chipotle, in response to changes and evolutions and consumer trends, have created this Chipotle lane concept, which I briefly described to the board, is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
And you've played an active role in implementing those new facilities throughout the country, or in particular, the Midwest, is that right?
Correct, yes.
Thank you. And so you also were very, very actively involved in developing the programming for the subject site, is that right?
Yes.
And most of the operating features are set forth in the findings of fact, which you've had an opportunity to read, as well as the affidavit that you provided, and all of the volumes of additional reports and information that you provided to the Department of Planning and Development. But I just want to get on the record a couple, I think, of those important operating features, such as the parking and the queuing, since that has been of utmost significance to the Department of Planning throughout this process. So real quickly, Ms. Hidorn, for this proposed site and locate facility, you intend to operate with, you'll have exclusive control over thirty-one parking spaces, is that correct?
I believe the thirty-one are shared with the convenience store.
Sorry, excuse me, yes. So you have twenty-four of those thirty-one, is that right? And that's pursuant to your lease with GW, is that true?
Correct.
And of those twenty-four parking spaces, you intend to designate at least four of those, the four that are, I don't know if Ms. Vazquez, there should be a parking plan or a site plan that, I guess this does. The four, yeah, those four parking spaces that are immediately abutting at the entrance to the building, those you intend to designate to third-party drivers that are picking up mobile orders, so DoorDash, Uber Eats, et cetera.
Yes, those would be the four, including the handicap accessible location right there, right by the front door. So if a third-party delivery driver did require handicap accessible parking, all four of those would be allocated to that use.
Perfect. And again, the intention behind that is that you are prohibiting such drivers from utilizing the drive-through lane, and they are directed rather to park and to go inside to pick up their orders, is that right?
That's correct. We have a mobile order pickup shelves inside just for that use.
Perfect, thank you. And then the remaining twenty parking spaces that, again, are within your exclusive control that are marked in the red diagonal line gray boxes, those are going to be shared parking, but for Chipotle's use exclusively, is that correct?
Correct.
And that will go to any overflow third-party delivery drivers and as well your customers who could be patronizing the facility either to dine in or to go inside and carry out, is that right?
Correct.
Thank you. And it's my understanding, based on looking at the programming for many of your other urban locations, that this amount of parking is quite significant. It actually is almost double what you have for your other facilities, is that right?
Oh, yes, in the setting where a lot of foot traffic will be coming in as well, this is a lot of parking.
And it's in far excess of what is required under Chicago zoning. And it's in far excess of what is required under Chicago zoning ordinance, is that true?
That is correct. I believe seven are required per code.
And then moving towards the queuing for the actual drive-through window, the proposal shows queuing for at least five vehicles without any interference with the interior drive aisles or other public ways, is that correct?
Correct.
And that is exclusive of the additional overflow spot that's designated in blue here, just in case the rare occasion comes when there's somebody who needs to pull forward and wait for their order to be finished, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
And again, on your four years of statistics that Chipotle's been maintaining for all of your existing operations, you feel that this queuing is sufficient to efficiently and safely service this particular Chipotle facility, is that true?
Yes, absolutely.
In fact, I believe those statistics show that over ninety-five percent of the time, there's no more than four or five drivers, even at peak periods, utilizing the drive-through window lane, is that correct?
Yes, that's what our independent traffic study did result.
And Mr. Chairman and members of the board, those statistics are in the applicant supplemental exhibit D. Based on your fourteen years of experience and your last four years, just really driving home this concept for the Chipotle lanes, then, Ms. Hydorn, is it your experienced opinion that the design and programming for this particular site, as has been modified in collaboration with the Department of Planning and Development, and will efficiently operate, as well as will also be compatible with the other improvements and businesses operating in the neighborhood?
Yes, we wouldn't be pursuing this site if we didn't feel that was the case.
And again, the chairman read in certain conditions to approval of this special use. One of those conditions was a request made by the Alderman that there'd be no menu boards, that this never operate as a traditional drive-through facility, and that it be maintained, as has been proposed here today. As I indicated, it's my understanding that Chipotle is comfortable with those conditions, is that statement true?
Yes, that is true.
Okay, thank you. Well then, Ms. Hydorn, I won't keep anybody any longer. As I indicated, prior to the hearing, you were provided with an affidavit, as well as a copy of the applicant's findings of fact. If you were to continue to testify here today, would your testimony be consistent with the statements that were made in those documents, as well as all of the information that has been tendered to the Department of Planning over the last several months?
Yes, it would be.
Thank you so much. Mr. Chairman, I have no further questions for Ms. Hydorn. We'd be happy to entertain any questions specific to her role in this, or I can continue with my other witnesses.
Keep going, Counselor, thank you.
Sure. Mr. O'Brien? Oh, sip your water, clear your throat.
I just unmuted, I'm sorry.
All right, no, you're good. Mr. O'Brien, you were retained by the applicant Chipotle in order to evaluate the subject site, as well as the surrounding immediate area, and to do an evaluation on whether or not the proposed drive-through pickup window that will service the Chipotle restaurant for this site is compatible, or sorry, meets and complies with all of the standards and regulations for a special use set forth under the current zoning ordinance, is that correct?
Yes.
Did you have an opportunity to go out and physically inspect the subject site and the surrounding area in light of the proposal that is before us here today?
Yes, on December fourth, I inspected the subject site. Subsequent to that, to refresh my memory, I was out there a week ago on June tenth, and the subject area is primarily commercial and business along Western Avenue, as well as North Avenue. However, in the upper floors, there are numerous instances where residential uses are present. And the subject site itself is an irregular L-shaped parcel containing approximately twenty-two thousand some hundred square feet. It's vacant, relatively level, decorated with surrounding streets, and it's zone B three dash two, which is Community Shopping District. And all of the properties to the east, west, north, and south are also zoned B three dash two, as is the subject, except to the north of the subject, there is one small portion that's zone manufacturing.
And throughout this process, you've been provided with updates and revisions to the plans, including the final plan package that was submitted that stated June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, and you have ensured throughout the process that your opinions remain consistent with any revisions to the plans and programming, is that correct?
Yes, I just wanted to make note of one thing on page two, under the proposed use, special use. Due to changes made in the plan, I had said that the entire site contained twenty-eight surface parking lots. I want to revise that to thirty-one due to the change in the plans.
Thank you so much, yes. And those changes, again, were made at the request of CDOT and the Department of Planning. Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. And throughout this process, then, does your opinion remain true that the proposed special use, the proposed drive-through pickup window at this location that will serve the Chipotle restaurant, is compatible with the other uses in the area, including some of those are including the residential uses, and will not have an adverse impact on the adjacent properties or other uses in the neighborhood?
In my opinion, it'll have no adverse impact at all. I think it's harmonious, compatible with other land uses, I would note. Within the general vicinity of the subject, I'm aware of at least six drive-through facilities, and I would mention there's a substantial difference between those facilities and the subject, and the fact that the subject, there's no menu store, you don't order at the windows, it's merely a pickup window, whereas the other drive-through facilities, they have menu boards, they also have the pickup window, but they can order right there at the site, and that therefore takes a substantial lengthy or more time to fulfill the order. And therefore, in those instances, you need a substantial more number of stacking for the cars, space for cars.
And these opinions of yours and the evaluations that you conducted throughout this many months, these many months, you have reduced those into writing and tendered a copy of an expert report that was prepared by you. You tendered that report to the board, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
By and through me.
That is correct.
And if you were to continue to testify here today, would your testimony be consistent with the statements and findings, but for the one that you just corrected, that are contained in that report?
Yes, it would.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Mr. Chairman, I'm just going to put on Mr. Golds really quickly, because he's endured a very long time with this project. Mr. Golds, if you can state your name and name once more for the record. You're muted, I think. Mitch, you're still muted.
Sorry, Mitch Golds, UW Properties, twenty-two eleven Alston, Chicago six oh six one four.
Thank you. And Mr. Golds, you own the subject property, and you've partnered with Chipotle on other ventures throughout the Chicagoland area, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And you have been very actively involved with this process from its inception, which for us started a couple of years ago, is that right?
That is correct.
And again, even as recently as, I think, a week ago, we were making some revisions to the plans based on further feedback from CDOT and all of your incredible efforts to work with the Department of Transportation and the Department of Planning to get them comfortable with the project, is that right?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. And as well, you've had ongoing communications with the Alderman's office, just giving them updates along with myself on the progression, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Thank you. Mr. Golds, you too were provided with findings of fact and an affidavit prior to this hearing, as well you were very active in producing a lot of the documentation that has been, was requested by the Department of Planning and Development throughout. If you were to continue to testify here today, would your testimony to be consistent with the statements that were made throughout those documents?
Yes, it would.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I don't need to put on any of the other witnesses under wraps, but they are all available for any questions.
Great, thanks for that, Counselor. Any questions from the board for the whole project, anybody involved in the project, Counselor, anyone? Okay, Counselor, we've got a lot of information here, so we appreciate it and appreciate the presentation. So I think we'll take this under consideration.
Thank you very much.
Take your consideration, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Have a safe and wonderful weekend.
Yep, thanks, everybody. Okay, let's move into our next string of matters, which is one sixteen, one seventeen, one eighteen, and one nineteen, twenty-two Z. With Counselor Patikas. If anyone is here to object on these matters, please just raise your hand, and I'm going to get you promoted right now. Okay, and really quick, so Mario, you're here to object, is that correct?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Then let me give a quick overview on how we run these when there's an objector. Basically, we'll start with the applicant giving their case and chief. The board will ask questions on this initial case and chief, after which we'll move over to you as the objector. You're then able to state your objection and ask any questions of the applicant. Afterwards, we go back to the applicant, they're able to respond and rebut to your objection that you just said. And then they do a short closing if they please. Throughout this whole process, the board can ask questions. And that's how we're running it. So with that, if anyone else is on to object, please raise your hand, and I'll also get you promoted, but Counselor, you can kick it off.
Okay, great. Thank you again. For the record, Chairman Nick Fatikas from the Law Offices of San Banks. I'm here on behalf of the applicant Lock Homes LLC. The applicant owns the subject property at nineteen forty-six South Displanes Street. The subject site consists of a substandard zoning lot that measures thirty feet wide by only ninety-seven point five feet deep, and it's currently vacant and unimproved today. The applicant is proposing to develop the property with a new three-story, three-unit residential building. The residential building will be supported by a three-car garage located at the rear of the lot. In order to permit the project, the applicant is seeking variations to reduce the minimum lottery requirement, the front setback, the north side setback, and the combined side setback total, along with the rear setback. We do have two witnesses available to testify on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Nicholas Lockmattow, and our project architect, Peter Sterniak. And if Nicholas and Peter are on, Chairman, if you could swear them in, I could then proceed to questioning.
Yep, absolutely. So Mr. Lockmattow, will you state your name and address? Actually, Nick, I'm trying to...
He was on by cellphone. He had confirmed that he was on a few minutes ago, just asking when we would be called. So I can double-check as well. And you know what? Nicholas is saying that he's answering. Nick, you might be on mute. And I don't know if there's a procedure for unmuting a phone.
I'm trying to find the phone. We had a phone on for a while, and now I just don't see it.
The nine, seven, eight area code?
Yeah, there's no numbers right now. Can you have him call back, Nick? Because we, there's no numbers on the Zoom, only names.
Yeah, I'll have him recall in. If you could just give me one second, I'm going to run and just grab my phone.
Yep.
Nick is saying that he's on, but nobody hears him.
Yeah, Peter, you're not on mute, just so you know.
Yeah, I'm not. But Nick, Nick is saying that he's on. We don't see him, do we?
No.
No?
He's trying to log, he's logged off to log back in.
All right, Counselor, give it another minute or two, or else I'm going to go to the next matter and circle back. We've got him. Nick, I'm promoting you.
Yes, hello, this is Nicholas Lockmattow, two one three three West Haven Street, Mount Prospect, Illinois, six hundred five six.
Okay, thanks, Nick. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Nick, again, you're the manager of the applicant Lock Homes LLC?
Yes.
And that entity owns the subject property at nineteen forty-six South Displanes, is that right?
Yes.
As I described it, the property consists of a substandard zoning lot that's currently vacant and unimproved?
Yes.
And your plan is to develop the property with a new three-story, three-unit residential building?
Yes, that's correct.
In order to permit the building, you're seeking to reduce the minimum lottery requirement, as well as the front north side, combined side, and rear setback, is that right?
Yes, it is.
And provided the board grants relief, you plan to rent the three apartments on the open market?
Yes.
And you've provided the board with an economic analysis summarizing the projected costs, expenses, and income for the project, is that right?
Yes, I have.
Your understanding that my office has filed a witness statement on your behalf in this case?
Yes, it is.
And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
Yes.
Thank you. Chairman, my next witness is Peter, the project architect.
Yep, yeah, Peter, can you state your name and address, please?
Peter Sterniak, fifty-two zero one North Harlem Avenue, Suite two oh one, Chicago, Illinois, six zero six five six.
Great, thanks, Peter. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you.
And Peter, again, you're a licensed architect in the state of Illinois?
Yes, I am.
And you testified in that capacity many times before this board, is that right?
Yes.
And you designed the building program for the proposed three-story, three-unit residential building at the subject site?
Yes.
And it's your professional opinion that the substandard lot depth dimension of ninety-seven and a half feet creates the practical difficulties or particular hardships in this case?
Yes.
And again, for that reason, we're seeking the variations from the board.
Yes.
Now, the minimum lottery reduction is specifically required to permit the three residential unit total, correct?
Yes.
And that's really an issue in this case, because the subject lot, again, is substandard and just seventy-five square feet short. and just 75 square feet short of the lot area requirement for three residential units, right?
Yes.
And to put that into context, the 75-square-foot reduction is less than a percent of the technical lot area requirement based on these lot dimensions.
Yes, that's right.
So again, if the lot was even two and a half feet deeper and even 100 feet, still substandard, we'd be able to permit the three units total, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Now, with respect to the front setback reduction, it allows you to align the proposed building with the average front setback on the rest of the buildings on our side of the street. Is that right?
Yes.
And, Mr. Chairman, you can see from the zoning map as well as the block plan provided with our findings of facts submitted that a majority of the buildings on our side of the street do encroach into that front setback. I believe the block plan had been presented a few slides earlier. And Peter, with respect to the side setbacks, and those reductions are actually only required to permit the footprint of the detached garage at the rear of the lot, correct?
Yes.
And again, that's an issue because of the substandard lot depth dimension. The footprint of our three-car garage necessarily occupies more physical space than it would on a standard lot, correct?
Yes.
Still, though, and I want to make sure this is clear, the principal building was specifically designed to maintain three-foot side setbacks on each side of the lot, correct?
That's correct. Yes, we have three feet on each side.
And on its own, with respect to the principal building, that three-foot side setback would be code compliant, correct?
That's correct, yes.
True for the rear setback in that it's being, we're asking to reduce it again to fit the footprint of our detached garage at the rear of the lot.
Yes.
And even with the relief, the principal building will still remain setback 34 feet from the rear property line, which exceeds the technical requirement. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Peter, is it your professional opinion that the resulting three-story building and detached garage will be consistent and compatible with the neighboring residential buildings on our side of the street?
Yes, I believe it will be.
And is it also your understanding that my office filed witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements we've provided?
Yes, it would be.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, that concludes the applicant's case in chief. On this project 1946, we'd be happy to answer any questions you or the board members might have about the project.
Thanks, Counselor. Yeah, so since I remember this was continued because the alderperson was new, were there any discussions with them afterwards about it? Or have you had many discussions with the neighbors?
Yeah, so I did receive an email earlier today. Again, knowing that it's past the submittal timeline, I can report, though, that the alderman met with our group virtually, reviewed the plans, and then actually went out to the site to kind of get an idea of what was being proposed and the other buildings on our side of the street. As far as we know, again, based on the email that I received from the alderman this morning, she has no objection to the proposal. On top of that, we explained that we had actually had discussions with a handful of our neighbors. I do have the addresses. Mr. Andrew Ramirez, who's the owner of the property, 2000 South Displanes, as well as Mr. Mark Randall, who I believe is at 1942 South Displanes. And we have no known objection from those immediate neighbors. Again, the alderman, in this case, we started with a prior alderman. A new alderman came to the seat. We met with that alderman, brought her up to speed. She did her independent research. And again, based on the email exchange, has no objection to what's being proposed for our lot.
Okay, any other initial questions from the board before we move over to the objectors and continue with the process?
Yes, this is Commissioner Esposito. Nick, just to clarify, the garage is attached or detached?
Actually detached. And I want to make sure that's clear. When we went through our initial zoning review, I was mistaken and I thought we were talking about putting on a connection or some type of access. And that's not the case. When we confirmed with DPD after our filing, because I thought maybe there had been a mistake either on our part or just in the interpretation, it is the side setback relief and the rear setback relief are specifically required to fit our garage on the lot at the rear of the lot. Because naturally, again, with the substandard lot, our side setbacks and everything shrink toward the rear of the site. But it's a detached garage with no garage access. I want to make sure that's clear as well for the record.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, so let's keep the process and move over to the objective side of things. So Mario Cota, I know there's two people there. So if you want to speak, I'll swear you both in. Just state your name and address.
Yes, Mr. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Mario Cota, and I'm here with my wife. And we, our home is located at 1948 South Displanes, Chicago, Illinois 60616.
Thank you. And Mario, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great. Thanks so much. And I apologize. I didn't catch your name.
Rosio Negrete.
Rosio, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings as well?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Okay, go right ahead.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, our home is, it's actually right between these two lots, 1948 South Displanes, again, between 1946 and 2000 South Displanes. And we would like to express our objection to the application. And we have a few bullet points here.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt. This is Commissioner Esposito. Could we see the aerial view? It would be helpful right now. Thank you.
Yeah, that's fair.
So as you can see in this picture, our home is right between these two lots. Now, I want to, I'll start with my bullet points. By having the setback on the north end and the south end, they'll have it back to zero. We are concerned about disruption of natural light, again, by reducing the setback to zero on both the north end and the south end. And I feel like, we feel our natural sunlight, our natural light will be decreased significantly. After that, also, our home, as you can see, it's a frame, it's a wooden home. And I would like to have the setback as a space for safety precautions for house fires, not only for ourselves, but also for the rest of our neighbors. Other concerns that we have, they are encroachment onto our property line, airflow and ventilation. Again, we go back to the loss of natural sunlight, privacy, public safety access, and also access to underground utilities. And we also feel like, and I must say that this is the very first time we actually see the design, the blueprints. And I feel totally that that's not correct, is not compatible to the rest of the homes on our block. And also, another concern is that by moving the front setback, I will lose the view completely from the former house. And we do have a very small porch in front of our home as well. As you can see there, that red porch. So wait. By having that decrease on the setback, it will lose our view as well. And then my wife also had another good point.
Yeah, so it's funny that you mentioned that you spoke to the aldermen, because we also spoke to the alderman and she actually told us the complete opposite. So it's really surprising for us and shocking us. We're not, we're not like developers. We're just homeowners. We just like our home. That's where my daughter grew up. So we really love the community. So it's just really upsetting that she kind of told you the opposite of what she told us. And like, not that long ago, too. One thing I want to mention is I just found out that it was gonna be like, I figured you guys were going to make the most money out of this units. And, but it's a rental unit. And if there's any indication of how you have taken care of these two empty lots, that's that picture that you're showing now, those were their previous owners. You never cut your weeds, ever. The weeds are, if you see the fence, the weeds grow that high. They just cut them last week. Never cut the weeds. Once a year, they cut them. And the whole time that these people have owned it, I think they've owned it for two years, they've cut it twice. And they, and then once they cut the weeds, they only cut them when they're up to the fence. All those crickets and all those mosquitoes and all those weeds, when they come clean them, they just throw them on my, our end of the fence. So that's an indication of what kind of like, kind of owners they're going to be with the rentals. It's kind of really scary. Again, we have children, you know, that's like, they like to play outside and things like that. So that's really upsetting. And I think that's it.
Yeah, may I ask also to add, you said you had notified neighbors. We were never notified. Upon purchase of the property, we received a letter, but it was from Fargo Group, which is, I don't know, is a construction company. I don't know who it was, but this is the first time we know until we received this notice of hearing, where it was Lock Homes. We thought it was Fargo. But again, we never received any kind of notification, anything of the plans. This is the first time we see the blueprints. And also, there was something else that I wanted to say. Yeah, going back to what my wife just said about meeting with the alderman, I see, as you can see, this was a continuance from April 21st. I was online when that very first hearing was addressed. And as a matter of fact, Alderwoman Lee, on the 11th Ward, she's the one who requested the continuance. I went on and I met with her, as a matter of fact, about a week ago. And she reassured me that she was gonna, she was not well-versed on the location and on the project, which was, she was going to request a continuance. I've been sitting here since like 7:30 in the morning. And it's very shocking to me that she said that, because she told me otherwise. I also spoke over the phone with a representative at the 25th Ward, which is Alderman Cincho. And they said, because again, it goes back to, here's the issue, and this is why we feel neglected, because it's starting next year, starting next year, as you know, the new map is gonna change. So our property right now, as it lies, is gonna be, it's on the 11th Ward. And also, starting the new map is gonna be on the 25th Ward. So I spoke to Cincho. He said, well, I can't really do anything. When I spoke to Alderman Lee, she said she was going to back me up, basically. And, but she did say that, you know what, I do have to speak to your new alderman, because again, that's gonna be out of my word. So I have to consider his opinion as well. So again, we feel like we're not getting any kind of help from, not help, but at least support from either or the new or the incoming alderman.
And just for the record, we didn't get anything from the alderman in time. So we won't, I know the counsel for the applicant noted that they said this morning they were in support. We're not considering that anyway, so.
And then, Mr. Chairman, I, we're actually, I'm in my office right now. But we're gonna switch to a, to a mobile device, because we have to, I have to leave my office.
Okay, no worries. No, I mean, your objection has been, has been heard. And what I say at this point to, before the applicant then goes and rebuts, do you have any questions for them?
Yeah, also, another concern, it was that if you are going from north to south, from property line to property line, and you're gonna have a three-car garage, what are you gonna do with your garbage cans? Where are those gonna be stored? You know, I mean, again, now that I find out that it's gonna be a rental unit, are you gonna have like a dumpster? And the dumpster takes a lot more space. Where are you gonna put that? Another thing to, Chairman and members of the board is, we, again, now that we know there's a rental unit, what about parking? You know, as you can see, the adjacent big rental unit, they take up a lot of parking. We also have, now with the new Market 88 that opened up on Jefferson, a lot of people are parking in our block. Also, we have the concert venue that they come and they take our parking. How are you gonna manage that? Those were my questions, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. To the phone, but we'll be, we're not gonna log off, Mr. Chairman. We're just gonna switch over. Thank you.
Okay, and we're gonna switch back to the applicant who's going to address some of those questions and rebut and respond. So this is perfect timing. So, Counselor, can you now go into rebuttal and address some of those questions and concerns?
Yes, absolutely. So as we, as we stated in our case in chief, the north and south side setback reductions are only to permit the footprint of the detached garage at the rear of the lot. Again, the principal building, the three-story building will remain setback from each property line, three feet. That's on both sides. So a total of six feet, which again, on its own, would have met the code requirement. I'd also point out, if we can go back to the two photos of the existing conditions, I know there's two separate properties, so that's one. And then the other, what's interesting about those views is that there are no windows on either side of Mr. Coto's home. So when we talk about light and air deprivation, there are no windows being blocked on either side of the property. Still, when we designed our building, the front stair was organized, specifically on 2000 South Displanes, was organized to open up, so to speak, on that same side of the property. That feature is setback approximately 13 feet. So while, if you go back, I'm sorry, Janine, if you could go back to the aerial showing the two properties, it had the red 1946 and 2000. If you can keep one more, the two site plans next to each other? That's it. So the stairs at the front are actually inset, which again, attempts to open up that front portion. So where, yes, the true front of the building is calculated eight feet from the closest encroachment to the front property line, the front of our building wall at the entrance by the stairs, which actually mirrors the neighbor stairs, is setback even further. So there's even less of an imposition of light and air, again, on the side of the property that has no windows. In terms of safety precautions, we agree, and that's why we're providing the three-foot separation, the three-foot setback on both sides of the lot. There was a question about whether there'd be an encroachment over the lot line. That's not what we're proposing. The principal building has setbacks. The detached garage would not. That's again, the relief we're seeking, to have the wider garage. In terms of consistency and compatibility with the neighboring buildings, the block plan that we provided shows that the average front setback for the block is approximately eight feet. That's the number that we're targeting, because we kind of reverse engineered into that number. There are some properties a little bit further. Again, they vary. Unfortunately for us, the neighbor immediately next door is the only one who's setback further than most of the other buildings on the rest of the block. Still, though, I think that the block plan is extremely telling, because it shows how our proposed building would align with one, two, seven of the improved properties, noting that there are, including the two subject lots, six vacant lots on the block. So again, we're trying to, again, meet that average front setback from block line to block line. We talked about the front setback requirement. Again, Chairman, I did forward the email that we received from the alderman. Whether you consider it is the discretion of the board. I just don't want to be in a position where I'm accused of making a false statement. The alderman did email me. I forwarded that email. I'm not aware of an objection from the alderman. I just want to make sure that's clear for everybody involved. Parking, we're meeting our one-to-one parking requirement on-site. I would note that the building at 2002 South Displanes is a multi-unit building that has more units than onsite parking. We're not that. Our three residential units will be supported by three onsite parking spaces. And then I would like to call Peter to explain. My understanding is that our part of the advantage of having a wider garage footprint is to store our trash inside the garage. And Peter, if you could just verify that or explain where you foresee the trash being stored on-site?
Yes, so the wider garage could accommodate a single recycling and regular trash per unit. That's what a lot of units do. We can't promise that, but if the tenants choose to keep it outside, for some reason, we have a decent apron of two feet as well of our own property between the public alley and the garage. So there's, there's many, many spaces, the city bins, there would be no container. It's a three flat. So it would be the same blue and black containers that the neighbors have up and down the alley. And yeah, we have, we have many possibilities for the garbage to deal with. And I don't see a problem with that in the future. As far as the front setback, I wanted to mention that, I'm actually looking at a calculator here, 97.5 is our lot debt. If we take 12%, the required is 11.7. The required is eleven point seven. So our reduction is, is minimal. Um, we do have the average of the block or the predominance. And the, the, the offset for the stair, that's actually thirteen eleven, thirteen feet, eleven inches. So. We, at that point, is actually more than required. Uh, but it's, it's, it's not that much far off the required eleven seven. We could put a thirty eight foot tall structure. At eleven point seven. Feet from the front property line. That's within the code. Um, we have a thirty, uh, feet ten inch structure at eight feet from the front. So I think we're, we have a, we have a good balance of, of height to, um, to front setback ratio.
Great. Um, any questions from the board?
Can somebody please walk us through what the hardship really is here?
Yeah, so the, the hardship on this particular lot is the fact that it's substandard, even though it's thirty feet wide. It's only ninety seven point five feet deep. So necessarily, our rear setback is smaller than what's allowed on a typical or standard depth city lot. So what we've done is again, design a building that we think fits the footprint of the building, of the lot. Um, again, it meets the front setback in terms of the prominent predominant, uh, front setback dimension. And it leaves thirty four feet of, uh, setback, we'll call it, um, actual setback. Between the rear of our building and the rear lot line. So the hardship is. Again, a function of every request is a function of the ninety seven point five foot lot depth dimension. And again, uh, without being redundant. The, with the exception of the front setback, the side and rear setback is specific only to the garage and not the principal building.
That's correct.
And just to be sure, I'm sure all the lots are the same size in that part of town, right?
Yeah, so we, we, the lots on our side, all are substandard. And the point that we're trying to make is that the design we're proposing. Is compatible with most of the rest of the, uh, mul- multi-unit buildings on the block. The rest of the block is predominantly zoned RT four. Uh, again, our neighbor to the immediate south is a, uh, three story, I believe, six unit building. Um, it encroaches, it's up five feet to the front property line. And again, the, the very, the, we provided the block plan to give you a certain dimension. But the front setbacks all seem to vary, with the exception of our neighbor, um, the objecting neighbor. The other setbacks on the block are actually less than, uh, the, the technical requirement.
Any other questions from the board? All right, counselor, you have the option, if you would like, um, to make a brief closing, um.
So Chair, Chair, I think the points were all made. The only thing I'm concerned about, I believe only, uh, si- that, uh, the, the applications related to nineteen forty six self-displanes. Were called, um, we kind of addressed them together. The testimony is nearly identical. I just want to, in the effort of time, and I, I, I don't want to waste your time repeating the same case for two thousand south of splints. If you need us to, we will.
Once, one sixteen through one nineteen, right?
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, we're good.
Two separate, okay, I just wanted to make sure you weren't expecting a separate presentation.
No, 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 we're, we're good. Um, yeah, I, I think I called them all out, but a- again, everyone's aware, it's one sixteen through one nineteen. Okay, great. Well, thank you very much, everyone, for your time and sticking on this late in the call, and we'll take this under consideration.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me.
Yeah, one more thing.
I just wanted to state, uh, something that, um, um, has not been, I did not, uh, address previously.
And, and sorry, uh, Mr. Coda, but we stick to a pretty strict process that I don't want to stray from, so.
It'll take, it'll take, uh, just one second. When they said that we don't have windows right now, uh, my wife and I, we actually. Are working with a contractor and we already saved money to purchase our windows. I did, but bought the windows. I can provide. Uh, uh, proof, they're not up yet. They're not gonna be delivered until August twenty ninth. Uh, but we are getting windows on the side, on both sides, on the south end and on the north end of our home. Again, just because we are very limited on natural sunlight. That was the statement that I learned.
Got it.
We are having windows, Mr. Chairman.
Your clarification is made, and now we're gonna take it under consideration. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks, everyone. All right, let's now go to calendar number one fifty five, dash twenty two dash Z, and, um, this stays with Counselor Fatikas. Um, if you're here to object on this matter, please raise your hand and I'll get you promoted. I'm promoting Salvatore Mar- Marterina right now. And Salvatore, once you're on, can you just confirm that you're here to object?
Oh, can you also talk if you're for the project?
Yeah, you absolutely. So are you, are you in support?
I'm in support, Mr. Chairman.
Got it. Thank you very much. Um, and, and just to confirm that, that Salvatore, right?
Yeah, I go by Sam, but Salvatore is like, that's what the police come look for Salvatore.
Perfect, um, all right, if, if you're here to object, please just raise your hand so that we know and, and can spell out the, uh, um, process. Good, Counselor, um. Get going.
Good. Uh, so again, good afternoon, Chairman, uh, hopefully for the last time today, uh, Nick Fatikas for the record. I am here on behalf of the applicant, uh, Real Vet West Loop LLC. The applicant owns the subject property at four fifty one through fifty seven, uh, North Elizabeth Street. The subject property consists of a single zoning lot that measures ninety six feet wide by only a hundred feet deep. The subject property had formerly been improved with a one-story warehouse and office building and off-street parking. Uh, the applicant has since taken down that building and is now proposing to develop the property with a two-story veterinary office building. The, uh, proposed building will be supported by fifteen off-street parking spaces. Although the, uh, proposed veterinary office and off-street parking plan would otherwise be permitted. In the underlying M two dash two zoning district, the subject property abuts an RT four zoning district to the south and east. And that's an issue in this case because the abutting residential districts impose setback requirements on the subject lot that are not, not otherwise applicable. To an M two dash two zone lot. And Mr. Chairman, our findings of fact, uh, included a zoning map, again, highlighting those, uh, different zoning dimensions all in the subject area. On top of that, uh, as I mentioned, the subject lot is only a hundred feet deep, so twenty five feet shorter than a standard depth city lot. So in order to permit our new two-story, uh, veterinary office building. The applicant is seeking variations to reduce the front setback from twelve feet to zero and reduce the rear setback from thirty feet to twelve feet. We have two witnesses, um, testifying, uh, this afternoon. The first, I believe, is Scott Pelletieri. He was, uh, named as a potential, um, backup witness. Dr. Joe Whelan, who's another one of the LLC managers, was unavailable, um, so I want to make sure that's clear for the record. And then also, uh, our project architect, Mr. Michael Mathias. Um, and Chairman, before I get into the, uh, uh, witness testimony. Nearly an identical case was presented to the board back in April of twenty one. A copy of the resolution was included with our, uh, findings of facts, the middle, and it references again, call number sixty twenty one Z. And at that point, the applicant's team had made a number of changes, um, to, to the original design. That were addressed during our community review process with the neighbors. During permitting, a few additional changes were proposed, and it was ultimately determined that a new set of variations would have to be sought. In order to permit the revised, actually scaled down plan that was being, uh, a, a permit was being sought for. I wanted to make the board aware of that background and just provide a brief explanation as to why we're backed. Within a year, asking for identical relief. Um, and with that, um, I would like to call my, uh, first of all, if you want to bring up both witnesses. Um, I have Scott, I also have, uh, Michael on, on the call.
Um, great, I'll get them sworn in and then, um, just so, um, uh, Sam knows, we'll take his support after we get through the witnesses.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, thank you. So first up, um, Scott.
I'm the applicant, Scott Peterright, three five four Baltimore Drive, Vernon Hills, Illinois.
Thank you, and we've, uh, and you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceeding.
Yes.
Great, okay, Michael Mathis, will you state your name and address, please?
Yeah, Mike Mathis, one zero one zero zero Orland Parkway, Orland Park, Illinois.
Thanks. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great, and do we have Dr. Whelan as well?
I don't believe so. I, I, he's not, he's not available.
Okay, no worries.
But, uh, Scott is an LLC manager, and he was disclosed on the economic disclosure. I just want to make sure again, that's clear for the record.
Perfect.
And, uh, Chairman, again, in the interest of time, I'm not aware of any additional objectors in the matter. If you'd like to, like me to move forward on a more truncated presentation, all of the information was provided in our findings. And of course, if you guys have questions, we'd be happy to answer those.
Um, yeah, truncated works well. Um, we, we don't have an objection here, so.
Okay, um, so again, uh, Scott, you, uh, are one of the managing members of Re- Real Vet West Loop LLC?
Yes.
And again, that entity owns forty four fifty one through four fifty seven North Elizabeth Street, correct?
Correct.
And it's a ninety six by one hundred foot deep lot?
Correct.
Uh, zoned M two two and currently vacant, right?
Yes.
And you're proposing to develop the property with a new two-story veterinary office building?
Yes.
For, to permit your design.
I, I'm sorry, I could not hear that question.
Yeah, Nick, you cut out for your question.
I'm sorry. Um, and the plan is to develop the property with a new two-story veterinary office building?
Yes.
And again, you're seeking variations to permit your building plan because of the substandard lot depth dimension. Along with the adjoining re- uh, residential zoning district. Is that right?
Correct.
Otherwise, again, the, the floor area, the height total, all of the other bulk requirements, uh, comply with the underlying M two dash two zoning district.
Yes.
Um, is it your understanding that my office filed witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent?
Gone again.
Yep, Nick, having some sound issues.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna lift up, I'm gonna lift up the speaker. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
All right, and Scott, um, if you were to continue to testify, would your testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
Yes.
Great, thank you, Michael.
Yes.
You are a licensed architect in the state of Illinois?
Yes.
You actually appeared before this board in, uh, the twenty twenty one zoning board case, is that right?
Yes.
And you designed both the original program and now the revised program for the two-story veterinary office building, correct?
Yes, I did.
And is it your professional opinion that the substandard lot depth dimension of a hundred feet? Together with the adjoining or abutting residential district, create the practical hardships or particular difficulties in this case?
Yes, it is.
Still though, you believe that your proposed design is consistent and compatible with the other established buildings, established businesses and buildings? In the immediate area, is that right?
Yeah, very much so.
Um, and if you were, uh, it's your understanding that my office filed a witness statement on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
If you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Chairman, that, uh, concludes our, our case in chief. We'd be happy to answer any questions you or the board members have about our program.
Great, before we go to the support, any questions from the board on the, the project in general? Okay, let's go, um, to Mr. Marterina. Um, Mr. Marterina, can you state your name and address, please?
Uh, Salvatore Marterina, eleven sixty six West Grand Avenue in Chicago.
Brandon, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do, Mr. Chairman.
All right, what brings you here today?
Uh, yeah, so basically, I'm the president of the Neighbors River West, uh, community group in the area, and, uh. But it'd be kind of short and sweet, cause, uh, I know it's the end of the call and you guys still have a couple hours left, but, uh. Basically, kind of sum it up, we put together, had a bunch of meetings. Uh, kind of put a memorandum of understanding together. It's, uh, fully signed, and hopefully if. They're successful today, we'll record that against the, uh, property, and I just want to thank the board for looking at this and. Um, the neighbors for all helping out and going through the process. Uh, it was kind of a long road, but I think we're at a pretty good point in the project.
Great, um, yeah, thanks so much, Mr. Marina, for coming and sticking it out, um, in support as well. And, you know, we don't have a couple hours left. This is our last matter of the day. We, we actually worked through the day pretty well, um, so.
So you guys had to get together and vote on everything after?
Yeah, yeah, it takes a little bit of time.
There you go, yeah, see.
It's nothing like we're used to. Um, so. You know, with that, Counselor, um, feel free to make a brief, brief closing, or else we'll, we'll take this under consideration.
No, uh, again, I think Sam summed it up. We worked with the neighbors, Alderman Burnett, but also the River North, uh, Resident Association. Um, I'm, yeah, I'm sorry, River West Res- Residents Association. Uh, we came to an agreement and we're, we're happy to be there at this point. Uh, any other questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, doesn't sound like we have any, so we'll take this under consideration, and I thank everyone for their time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
If you can humor me, uh, Mr. Chairman, I also wanted to pass on, um, well wishes to Steve. I don't know if he's still on, um, but he's been, uh, unfortunately, Steve and I have always, uh, fought in front of the zoning board. Um, but I want him to know that I've learned an absolute, uh, careers worth of, uh, information and, and strategy from him. Um, he's been, uh, even though we're sometimes on opposite sides of the aisle, he's almost been a mentor of sorts, and I just want to wish him the best. Um, and, and we'll, hopefully we'll see him soon in some capacity.
Yeah, I grow ball still wants to thank him also. Uh, he's been a good help to the group and to the alderman over the years.
We'll pass both, we'll pass both the messages on, cause I think he's just like out celebrating every night now, so.
He's fishing.
No, but we'll definitely let him know. Thank, thank you both.
Okay, have a great day.
Bye, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thanks, everyone. All right, I move that we convene in the closed session pursuant to section two C four of the Open Meetings Act. For the purpose of considering the evidence and testimony presented in open session. For those viewing by live stream, we will return from our closed session and the live stream will continue at that point. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, we are closed. Thank you, everyone.
All right, welcome back everyone. I move that we return to open session. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, we are back and we will now vote. Note that any motion to approve a special use will be tied to the recommendations of the department and any additional conditions read by me. I move to approve all continuance requests to the date stated by me. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, they're approved. I move to approve all withdrawal requests. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, they're approved. Okay, now into the calendar. I move to approve application for calendar number 172-22-S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 173-22-S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 174-22-S. Commissioner Toya second, Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 175-22-S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 176-22-Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve applications for calendar numbers 177 and 178-22-Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 179-22-Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 180-22-Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 181-22-Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. All right, I move to approve applications for calendar numbers 182-22-S, 183-22-S, 184-22-Z, 185-22-Z, 186-22-Z and 187-22-Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 191-22-S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito? Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters approved. I move to approve applications for calendar numbers 192-22-Z and 193-22-Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 194-22-S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 196-22-Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 197-22-S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 198-22-Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve applications for calendar numbers 199 and 200-22-Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Sanchez?
No.
Commissioner Esposito?
No.
Commissioner Toya?
No.
I vote no, the matter is denied. I move to approve application for calendar number 201-22-S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters approved. I move to approve applications for calendar numbers 202, 203, 204, and 205-22-Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 206-21, sorry, 206-22-S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve applications for calendar numbers 207 and 208-22-Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 209-22-Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 210-22-S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Sanchez?
No.
Commissioner Esposito?
No.
Commissioner Toya?
No.
I vote no, the matter is denied. I move to approve application for calendar number 211-22-S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 212-22-S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters approved. I move to approve applications for calendar numbers 213 and 214-22-Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Mr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve applications for calendar numbers 216-22-Z and 11-22-S. For clarification, with DPD, the Department of Planning and Development's full recommendation. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve applications for calendar numbers 217 and 218-22-Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 45-22-S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve applications for calendar numbers 116, 117, 118, and 119-22-Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 155-22-Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. Okay, I move to approve the written resolution containing findings of fact consistent with the votes of the board for board calendar number 75-22-S. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, they're approved. I move to approve the written resolutions containing findings of fact consistent with the votes of the board for the board's May 20th, 2022 regular meeting, with the exception of board calendar numbers 152-22-Z, 162-22-S, and 137-22-Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, they are approved. And I move to adjourn this meeting. Commissioner Toya second, Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, we are adjourned. Thank you so much everyone, unlimited thanks. I go to Steve Valenziano, keep thanking him. He's at all, I hope everyone has a great weekend.
All right.